Jeff coming? Anyway, okay. All right. Okay. 6:30. Welcome. May 7th, 2018. The school board work session. So, we will jump into our second item on the agenda unless there's any other comments on the agenda tonight. Board members? Anna? No? Nothing? Okay. All right. So, we are going to jump into the report from IAA. How was? How was the drive?
It was great. Nice and sunny. So, what we're gonna do tonight, I'm Tara Koltz as the principal, if I haven't met any of you. And I brought along some guests here. And we're gonna take you downstairs and through the school. And then we'll come up and some of the students want to speak to you guys. And then I have some parents too, if you want to ask questions. On last Friday, we had our IAA gala, it's third annual. And so, the school's all set up. It has all the new art. It has everything down there, so it's perfect timing, actually, because we just got it all set up, ready for you guys. So, if you're ready to go, we'll go downstairs. Feel free to ask these guys any questions as we go either.
Just in case.
Okay.
Board members, just before we let Tara go, any other questions, thoughts?
For myself or?
Or for the whole ensemble.
I told them they'd have to speak. You know, I think we did it downstairs, but if you have any other questions.
They might have a couple.
Oh, yes. All right, Fred.
First of all, congratulations on where the program's at at this point.
Thank you.
That's coming from the person who did and fought as hard as I possibly could to not change from what we had before. The old, old school.
Yeah, I know.
And, and, and I was wrong. And I've never been more happy to be wrong about something in my life. But what sells me every time, it was at the school board association meeting last fall, whenever it was, and, and other times, is when I talk to your students. Adults are adults and they, they have an agenda, et cetera. Kids don't have an agenda. They just like to tell you what's going on and what they like about things and what they don't like about things. And, and that's, that's how I've learned to have so much respect for, for this particular group. I do have another, a question. What do you need from us that, that could help? And I, it's a loaded question because at the same meeting, at the same meeting, the thing that came through talking to the kids was IAA doesn't have a counselor. And they thought that that would be a very important, a very significant improvement or something very positive to have here, so, but to help them, direct them in, in where they're going maybe after they leave here, where they are now, and to help them understand that this is why you're doing this, or whatever a counselor might do. Well, how do you feel about that?
We've gone down the pathway of talking about a social worker. We have quite a bit of connections to the two high schools around some of the career counseling and things like that. But when it comes to the mental health stuff that the parents touched on a little bit, it would be, I think a social worker would be the pathway we'd look at.
Somebody who could get to really know the kids. And at that level.
Yep.
That's all I have.
I mean, I could also plug, you know, we need a new dishwasher. And a greenhouse, but, okay.
Well, the students, what, what, what would be on your wish list to make this even a better place? A more productive place? Not a fun place, but a more productive place?
I'm four foot eleven, so I'm gonna...
Almost five, just almost five.
Yeah, every time I go in, I ask that I raise an inch and they're like, no. So, I guess, we don't really need a lot, I mean, like a lot of simple stuff, simple stuff that Tara said, like, you know, stuff that's gonna help Pro Start, everything that's gonna help us. As far as like counseling goes, we do have, they do offer us like a therapist that can come in and talk to us for free, like twice out of the week, and that can be offered to us. We also, all of the teachers take a special interest in us. It's not just Tara. And a lot of them do know what goes on with us. If it's not one teacher, a different teacher knows what's going on with the student because we are really small. If I wish to see this place anywhere is that it was bigger and more accessible to people. So, more than one of us, because I know there's like one in California, but then we have us, which is just a floor. Not that if we were bigger, it would take away from the whole family feel, but that doesn't mean that a bigger school won't have a family feel to at least a good portion of them. So, if we could figure out how to expand, especially let people know that what we are and who we are to younger ages, let them know that we're here.
Do either of you know, know kids from your previous environments that you think should be here that aren't?
Oh, tonight? You mean tonight?
No, not tonight. It should be at IAA.
I, yeah. I definitely think so. I've offered it to, or like offered the idea, I'm like, hey, I just transferred to this school and like from, we had a new, actually, I told her about it. Her name's JD and she transferred here this quarter, or last quarter. And she's like, oh, my gosh, I feel exactly the same way you did. I did not like going to Chaska School. I was eating alone at lunch and now I'm here. And she's eating in the classrooms with other students. Like, I have a bunch of people would love to tell about this and have.
I, I think when we've done the research on this size school and the model, about 140 is where, what the research says, otherwise you lose the small setting field. So, you do, you know, if there was a vision, there may be a satellite culinary program or something else. Because 140 is really, in order to keep that advisory model, keep the family feel, needs to be around 140.
Okay. Great.
Anything else?
Board members, anything? Well, I think I speak for everyone. When I say thank you, it's a, it's obviously a beautiful night out, so you must be pretty impassioned to forego the splendor that's outdoors. So, thank you for sharing your stories and your passions, your heartfelt sympathy, you know, your heartfelt, you know, appreciation, you know, is, is, is great to hear. And we have, obviously, we have a lot of people with a lot of complaints at times, but in general, we don't, you know, to see the impact that a program has at such a personal level for, for our young people is, is just awesome. So, thank you very much for sharing your insights and your stories and what this program means to you, because that's the kind of stuff that we need to know so we can keep things like this going. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. From one group of young people to a smaller group of young people.
And there was one.
And there was one.
Yes.
All right, Anna. Communication from the student representative tonight.
Yeah, so we had our prom on Saturday night, so that was the big event that we're all recovering from. Everyone needs a little extra sleep this week, but isn't super ideal with AP testing, but everyone had a really good time. The dance went great. No complaints there. We had it at the Chaska Event Center, which was new, because we've had it at the Arboretum in the past, but it was gorgeous and it was a great space, so that was a lot of fun. We had decision day last week, I want to say, so that was a really fun celebration for all of our seniors. We don't have a lot of traditions at Chan since we're so new, but that decision day is one of them, where the seniors have a special senior breakfast and everyone's wearing their shirts and all the staff wear their shirts. And they have a big ceremony where they get to celebrate all the decisions that they've made, whether it's a four-year college or a gap year or work or a tech school, so they really embrace all of the choices that we have available to us after we graduate from here. And then they have a special senior lunch too, so, and that just kind of kicks off the rest of the year when they make senior tiles and it just gets everyone really excited, especially in this time when there's a lot of testing and crazy stuff going on. It was a nice day to bring everyone together. And then, just from some sports stuff, so our tennis team for boys, they've won 22 of their 27 matches this season, so they're on a roll.
Wow.
Yeah, so that's impressive. And then baseball, they've won three games in a row, so they're super pumped about that and hoping to keep that winning streak going. And then, just like a fun fact, that you've probably heard Frank Ragnow was first round pick to the Lions, so they still have Maddie, his younger sister, as a senior at school, so everyone was really excited about that and all of our coaches that had Frank, so there's a little fun fact plug for Chan. And then, coming up, we have the Run for Research 5K. So, that's gonna be on the morning of May 19th, and I think it's from, check-in is at nine and it goes to like 12:30. So, it's a 5K in the area and the proceeds are gonna go to childhood cancer research. And we currently have three kids at Chan that are battling some form of cancer, so it's a big deal for a lot of the students and a lot of the staff that are gonna be participating to show their support, so I wanted to share that with you all too, in case you're interested, so. Registration's on Twitter somewhere.
Thank you. Awesome. And the, there was the play, there was a...
There was the one act, Comedy of Errors, that just finished on Friday. So, yeah, I didn't get the chance to see it unfortunately, but...
Quick, yeah.
Yeah, but it was in the black box, which was cool, and the way they had the stage set up, it was like a big I, and so the audience was like in the middle of the set, so that would have been a cool experience to be a part of, but, yeah, they had fun with that, so.
Great. Well, thank you. How many AP tests you have this week?
I have one this week, so, not bad.
How many this week?
One. Good balance.
All right. Well, you feel free, if you need to go study.
I do.
So, with that, I'm leaving, but thank you.
And understandable.
Thanks for being here, though.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to 4.0. Mr. Brecht, you have a field trip to tell us about.
Good evening, Gordon. One quick good news field trip item. Cover sheet indicates Chaska Chan HOSA. A few students earned the opportunity to go to the national competition, so you'll see the dates are a little bit out of our school year. It's June 26th through July 1st. The rest of the details are on the field trip report, but it looks like four students will be participating. If you have any questions, I can answer them now, otherwise I know what usually goes on your consent agenda at the following meeting.
That's awesome. I don't know that we've had sent kids to the national one before, but this is great. Okay. No questions? All right, consent agenda bound. Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, DeeDee. Let's get to some numbers.
Okay. So, tonight to, kind of winding down on our budget process for the 2018-19 budget review, tonight we'll go over, Pam will go over, the other funds, so everything but the general fund. And that will include the food and nutrition services, community service, debt service, and then proprietary and fiduciary. So, I'll turn it over to Pam and we'll also end by talking about some next steps and a little bit of legislative.
I'm 5'1". Let's start with nutrition services. So, next year, we're planning on serving meals at 16 locations, 14 of our own sites, plus Southwest Metro and one non-public, with our student population for meals about 98/77. Planning on about 240,000 breakfasts next year, bringing in revenue of about 442,000. Participation is almost 78% of our breakfast program with our students with, that qualify for free and reduced lunch. On the lunch side, we serve over a million meals to students, adults 21,000, bringing in 3.7 million in revenue. 41% of that is paid with state and federal revenue. Then our other categories of revenue à la carte, 990,000, that's about 40,000 more than this year, catering, 173 summer school, 24/5. Those two categories are pretty close to what we have this year in the budget. We are not increasing prices next year, so same prices. On, on the expense side, our food and supplies and actually overall expenditures are gonna increase about 1.18%, I believe. And then our salaries are per, per contract parameters. So, we always like to look at pie charts and our overall revenue is $5.3 million. 60% of that is from actual pupil sales or family and student sales, or 3.2 million. Our federal revenue, that's a reimbursement that we receive, is 30% of our revenue, state is 5%, and then all of the other categories bring in about 5% more. On the expenditure side, our total expenses are $5.3 million. That's up only 62,000 from our current year budget, or 1.18%, I mentioned earlier. Our biggest chunk of that pie, or biggest slice, I guess, would be the better way to say that, is for food and supplies, or 51%. Salaries and benefits are 42%. Then we have purchase services, that's for things like repairs and maintenance, some staff development, that's 6%. And then capital outlay, our equipment is 1%, or 82,005. They're planning on purchasing some dishwashers, warmers, and ovens next year. So, looking at the...
Can I put a dishwasher for the IAA?
Maybe that's in the plan, I'm not sure. We'll have to check with Roxanne on that one. So, revenue again is $5.3 million. Expenses are 5.3, bringing our, our fund balance, our projected fund balance to 1.28. It's a fund balance improvement of 25,300, so our revenue over our expenses by 25,3. And that percent of the 1.2 million is 24% of our total expenses, so very healthy fund balance. And then moving on to, trying to move on to community services. We break out our...
The fund balance?
Yes.
So, that can be spent on capital equipment, right?
It can. Okay. What we're actually planning, and this will, we just talked about it after this presentation was over, in our cost containment plan, we have planned to, let me start over. Every three years, if a food service fund balance is healthy, you can re-code expenditures from the general fund into the food service fund for cleanup of the cafeteria and some utilities and things like that. We did that two years ago, so this would be the third year. We, we totally intend to do that and we had some discussion whether or not we would budget for it. And it really came up when I was working on the general fund budget, because I had that in the plan and I was half a million off, so I was like, can we do this now or should we wait and have it as a budget revision? So, we will come back in June, the first meeting in June, and go over all these again quickly, and we're gonna add that at that point in time. And with that, we would be down to a 13.4% fund balance once we take, it's about a half a million dollars. I haven't done all the calculations yet, so that's really great that we can do that, so. Now, moving back on to community services, we, we break our community services for budget into three general care categories. I went too far. There we go. It's being persnickety, I'm not going to, I'm gonna put my hands back here. So, general and enrichment, early, early childhood, and then non-public. So, first, we have general and enrichment, and we have a couple of revenue assumptions. So, we have club care and after-school enrichment programs, and they're trying to collaborate somewhat. So, our students that are in after-school club care can go to the after-school enrichment programs without paying for both programs. So, there's a little bit of work that they're doing to, to coordinate those two programs. So, that will actually be a little, it's a small, small decrease in, in revenue. And then they're realigning the full-day preschool care program. So, there's a component of, of full-day preschool that's care, childcare, and then there's a portion that's, that's educational in nature. And so, they're, they're redoing that program. And so, we're actually, we'll have a little bit of additional revenue, because they're also participating in the pathway programs, which is additional state revenue for scholarships for students or children, preschool children that would qualify for free and reduced lunch. So, that will be a little bit of additional revenue. On the expenditure side for, we're still in the general and enrichment category, we have salary increases per contract, and then we have about 2.7% increase in programming costs. And then there's some additional supplies for the check and connect program that they're gonna be adding to two elementary schools next year.
And what's the check and connect? Sorry.
To recall that...
Jackie's coming.
Jackie Johnston, would you care to?
If you, if you remember, Jordan Zarda came and presented and Jeff Tice a few months ago, and they talked about the check and connect program. And that's where we get adult volunteers to be a one-on-one mentor with youth. And so, we've had it in the middle schools and the high schools. This year, we had it in a couple of elementaries, and we're gonna expand it to some more. It's not a huge cost increase, because it's really just for kind of supplies, because it's volunteer time.
Thank you.
And on to early childhood category, our, our revenue assumptions, we kind of talked about those with the, the care side of the full-day preschool program, so we have a little bit of additional revenue with the pathways. Then on the expenditure side, we have staffing increases per contract. This is also the second year of the teacher contract, where we've had two different salary matrix, matrices, and the Title I early childhood teachers will be moving to the regular teacher contract. So, that's an increase. We also have additional licensed staff in that realignment of the full-day preschool program. And then we will be utilizing the transportation assistance program for our family literacy program, so we have families where the students would qualify for free and reduced lunch that will be able to receive one of these programs that Community Education will purchase, and that is savings, because we used to send a bus previously, so it's, it's a more cost-effective way to go. Then on the non-public side, we have some minor rate increases. Health and guidance rate, reimbursement rate went up, textbooks went down, and our student count is flat from current year. That's a reimbursement program, so our revenue and expense is equal. Then, looking at all three categories, you can see overall, we have 7.8 million in revenue, 7.8 million in expenses, leaving that fund balance bringing down to 594,255, which actually, for the first year in a few years, that's an increase in the community add fund balance by $9,051. And that would be about 7.6% of expenditures, that fund balance. Then, moving on to, to debt service, so we have three different categories of revenue listed here, property tax, first of all, we can levy 105% for our principal and interest payments each year. Then we have some long-term facility maintenance aid. This is, will be the second or third year that we have that, and that is related to the new aid and levy program with MDE. This is related to our alternative facility bond debt payment. And then our other category is, it's pretty much 50/50 interest, and then we have some state aid for abatement aid. Then on the expense side of debt service, we have principal, 11 million interest, 6.3, and then some other, like administrative expenses, for a total of 18.2 million. Then a summary, 17.5 in revenue, 18.2 in expenses, brings that fund balance to $3.2 million. Moving on to proprietary or our internal service funds, we have three internal service funds for insurance. We have health, dental, and Chromebooks. On the dental and Chromebooks, we're not planning on any increases in the premiums. The Chromebook is just for parents to pay for their students when they step on their Chromebook for repair parts. And that, that are, of course, our dental plan and then our, our self-insured health plan. And you heard of a few board meetings ago that we're actually having a decrease in our premiums, because our, we've raised that fund balance or reserve to a healthy, healthy point. So, it's a 2 to, 2 or 7% decrease in premiums based on which network you choose, so you can get an additional 5% if you choose a narrow network. And then our expenses are just our, our projected claims and stop-loss insurance and, and those type of things, fees. And then, as far as our reserves or our projected fund balance for these, we, we kind of have goals for, for, that are different for, for each one, so dental insurance is more just a, a limited cost coverage plan. There's never gonna be any big, big variations in expenses, so we don't, we're not looking to have eight months of, of fund balance. So, you can see, we're going from 283.4 to 283.1 with our revenue and expenses, so we're still, I think it's four point, almost five months, so we're, we're healthy there. On the health insurance, we have a goal of 8 to 10%, excuse me, 8 to 10 months of a fund balance or reserve there. And with the 8.6 in revenue and 8.2 in expected expenditures, we'll be just about nine, nine months of a fund balance. And then the Chromebooks, we, I think that we have a lot of students that may step on those Chromebooks and will, will, will use that expense and always have pretty much zero of a fund balance. Then, moving on to our, our fiduciary funds, we have the OPEB trust, our irrevocable trust, our earnings are all investment earnings, our FLEX plan, that's our Section 125 plan for medical and dependent care expenses. That's just based on our employee participation and their employee, our payroll deductions to, to cover that cost. Then our scholarship sets, payments from the Rotary or whomever is, is donating those funds. Then on our expense side, we have our implicit rate subsidy from our actuary trust or our actuary schedule, and then the other expense will be what our actual retirees and their costs for OPEB. Then we have our, our FLEX, just the reimbursements for those daycare and medical. And then our scholarships, we always true those, what we have incoming, we, we plan for those expenses. So, they may be a scholarship over three or four years, but we, we keep that, that revenue and expense equal. So, then over here, you can see that our OPEB trust continues to do well. Our plan for next year is that our revenue will still offset all of our expenses, so we're not, we're actually planning to increase our OPEB trust balance, so that will, that's a great thing. Our employee benefit is still at 173,000, and again, that scholarship fund is, will be zero with the, we have about 80,000 flow through there. Our next steps, we know on June 4th, we're gonna come and tell you what we're, how we're changing the food service fund, and then we'll have, go through all of the general fund and then any other changes that we may have. We looked at the capital-related budgets in March, and so there might be some minor changes there. And then on June 18th, we'll come back for approval, and so you can see 300 pages of joy.
Blood, sweat, and tears.
So, the 300 pages of joy is already printed?
No, this is last year.
Oh, this is last year's 300, okay.
And, and I'm sure that you did hear that we, we were awarded the Meritorious Budget Award from, from ASBO, so...
Saw it on Twitter.
And now DeeDee is gonna go through some legislative activity.
Real quick, Pam?
Yes.
Just curious. How many Chromebooks do we have out now in our district? Oh, we're bald, aren't we? David? David? No, he's gone.
I was gonna say...
How many?
8,000.
8,000. How many get broken?
Actually, the number, you know, initially, when we first started, we were, we had a high breakage rate, about one per day.
Oh, did you?
And over the last few years, that's really gone down. Kids are doing a better job taking care of them. I mean, it still happens, but the, the rate has gone, we don't even really talk... I mean, it still happens, but the, the rate has gone, we don't even really talk about the breakage rate anymore like we used to really monitor. I mean, they're still monitoring it closely in IT. We haven't had to talk about it in terms of, is it costing us additional funds because of breakage, so.
So one per day would be about 180. So we're less than that, so call 150 out of 8,000. Wow.
It's not bad.
All right, just curious. I'm sure there's some good stories that come through then. All right, thank you.
Okay, so real quick, a few legislative things that I wanted to bring you up to date on. You've likely heard that the governor has proposed some emergency state aid, 137 million, a one-time aid. It would be about $126 per student. For our school district, that's about $1.4 million, which would greatly be appreciated. I do know there's some opposition out there against that. So again, it's just the governor's proposal. Some of the other areas that they're looking at, and this is not a complete list because if you look at AMSD's list, it's 52 pages long. So I'm just hitting some of the highlights. One of the areas that you've heard Laura Pingree-Kyle talk about, and we've all, we made the resolution last time, is to improve our special education aid. And so the governor has an increase on the cap from $180 to 210, and then with an annual increase of $40, that annual increase is, is a big deal because we don't see that. Additionally, there's some look at the safe schools and long-term facility maintenance as it relates to providing funding that can accommodate some of the security and safety. Our school district is kind of ahead of the game and done some of that, but there are some things left that we have not completed, such as PA systems and maybe some of the alarms and that. So it depends on how they come forward with that. Food services, as long as we're talking about that, there's a push for the meal policy and making sure that we don't take meals away from kids. I just want to assure you, we do not take meals away from kids in our school district. We do try to communicate to families and let them know where their children's balances are at. We send out emails. If you've ever been on that, you, you understand what I'm talking about. But we do work and all school districts do at times have difficulty collecting on past due. So we did fill out a survey related to that to send that information. And I have not seen the compiled list, but. And then there's another one related to special elections as it relates to bond issues. They want to have all special elections be in November. There's many school districts out for bond referendums tomorrow. So we'll see what, what happens with school districts. But that's one area that could be detrimental for school districts in general. And one, not only being that there's a lot of activity and could get lost in the shuffle, but two, it really does impact when we're trying to get construction workers and managers. If we're all going out at the same time, then that limits the amount of people and costs will go up. So there's, there's, there's still talk on all of these things. There's more things going on. You probably know even more, and I know Clint's at several meetings too. But legislation, legislative session ends in a couple of weeks. We'll see, you know, where things shake out and what happens. I know that Masbo has a, their conference this year. And Friday, Tom Melcher comes and talks to our, our group about the legislative proposals from both the Senate and the House and then the governor. So we'll see if we've got any more information. But as Pam said, we'll bring back the rest of the budget on July, June 4th and, and then ask for approval for the full budget then, that, that second meeting in, in June. So any further questions for either Pam or I?
Just a quick update from AMSD. As we were there on Friday, they, and they did talk about the supplemental aid. There wasn't a lot of confidence that we'll actually see any of that money, but it may be the bargaining chip that gets more special ed cross-subsidy dollars or more, say, school dollars. So they do think we probably see some additional money, just not necessarily for that.
Yeah, I mean, the hard part is, it's just a one-time. So I mean, it's not like you can go, hey, you know, let's go set up some big new program because then next year you don't have the money. So.
However, it can offset reductions that, I mean, will be dipping into fund balance.
Right, yes. Basically, we go in your fund balance.
Correct.
I mean, that's my point.
Yep, yep.
But I mean, I think, I think Dayton has done this, you know? He throws things out there and kind of like four-year-old preschool, you know? He throws things out there and then uses that as, as a way to get more funding. He, I mean, he's been a good governor from an education standpoint, so.
It's in the, I'm sure it's part of some complicated negotiating thing, but.
I'm sure it is, but I'm happy that he's doing it and so let your legislature know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. They've been waiting, we've been waiting. Amy, you bring the team up. Brian, Brenda, Chris.
Well, good evening. Tonight, we're excited to be here to talk to you about all of the great professional learning opportunities that will be offered to our staff throughout the summer as well as many staff within the region. As you know, Brenda, Brian, and Chris have been working hard along with our instructional coaches, digits, personal learning coaches, some of our administrative reps and teacher teams to both identify what are the needs for summer professional learning as well as to encourage people to bring or to come forward with their many strengths and talents and to provide opportunities to their colleagues. So I am going to turn it over to the TNL team to tell you about all the great things that will be happening while the teachers are off during the summer.
And what better day than when it finally feels like summer, so. Yeah, we, as Amy said, we have incredible lineup of offerings for teachers across the district. This again is our definition of personalized learning for Eastern Carver County schools. We want to highlight this one sentence that, that comes from that definition, that whole notion of co-designing meaningful learning opportunities. And for summertime, we really are putting our teachers at the center of their learning. And so when we started constructing a lot of the opportunities, we spent a lot of time talking to instructional coaches, talking to teachers, digital learning coaches, personalized learning coaches, saying, what do people need? What, what are the opportunities that we really need to put out there for people to, to meet their needs as they think about what's next in their trajectory for success with students? So this is what went out to teachers, and these are all actually hyperlinks to all of the different opportunities. And so you'll see things that are going through, through June into some into July, and then again in August when we're back for personalized, for the Personalized Learning Summit and some of the other technology academies that are going to go on. And we're going to talk more about some of these things at length. Soon as school is out, during the 11th, 12th, 13th, and 14th, over at Chan High School, we'll again have our Summer Academy. A huge portion of Summer Academy is paid for through QComp dollars. So teachers are paid to teach, teachers are paid to attend. And again, those are coming out of things that people have identified as needs. So where you see courses offered in, those are all the different types of things that we're offering throughout that. There's some dedicated funding for, from the technology levy that helps fund June 11th, which are really technology-focused days. And so we have our digital learning coaches offering a lot of those classes on the 11th of June. And then through the other days are really the, the QComp and some of the special education offerings. We again are trying to provide childcare so if, so we can remove that barrier for people who would say, you know, I really can't be there because of. So that's, that's an opportunity for people to come and, and have some support for childcare as well. In addition, Clint has dedicated some revenue, an additional $40,000 to help us carve out some additional time for work to be done in the summer in regard to curriculum and instruction or teaching and learning. And so at the elementary level, we'll be paying teacher teams to come in to look at either aligning or creating resources that are aligned to our power standards and learning targets at that level. As we continue to refine the work that we're doing around power standards and learning targets of the curriculum that we're delivering, we want to make sure that our resources are really aligned to all of that. So, and we've, we've made sure we've done that through purchasing upgraded resources in both language arts and mathematics. But sometimes the assessments aren't at Eastern Carver County's definition of, of what meets that standard. So we want to make sure that our assessments reflect that. And so teams will be in working on that at the elementary level and similarly at the secondary level. And we really want this whole notion of working collaboratively for an extended period of time. So even though our teachers have 60 minutes of prep time at the elementary level per day, that's not really enough to get started for an extended piece of work. And so the, the summertime provides some additional opportunity for that. At the secondary level, because their power standards and learning targets, that whole refresh cycle has to happen with the whole team together. Some of that will be happening in June as well for those secondary teams. And again, with, along with designing power standard assessments. For probably the last four years, we've been offering and then requiring the personalized learning cohort for all of our instructional staff. And we also had a cohort for all the administrative staff. We use summertime to yet get another offering out there because we don't, we try to minimize the amount of substitutes that we bring in for teachers to do things. So we offer around the personalized learning cohort that actually dovetails with Summer Academy. So we do some of the work before Personalized Learning Summit, and then we do some additional that actually happens through the PL Summit, and then that, that group gets together again. So this is really about understanding the what and the why of personalized learning, how standards-based learning is a component of, component of that. We just want to make sure that all of our instructional staff keep that whole notion that personalized learning is the umbrella for everything that we're doing in, in Eastern Carver County schools. So it provides a great opportunity to set the stage and then use all the other vehicles that we have to really reinforce that. And we'll let Chris talk about some of the other elements.
Good evening, everyone. I'll talk a little bit about a few technology support opportunities throughout the summer. First you see here, this is, Brian alluded to it a little bit, in, on June 11th and also some dates in August, our digital coaches will be supporting teachers with integrating, effectively integrating technology to really support personalized learning. So some of the areas that we focus on around our personalized learning, SAR, engagement with learning tools, earned voice and choice, purposeful instruction, assessment, feedback, purposeful learning. So really, the, the idea is to, to support our staff so we're most effectively integrating technology to support and to enhance learning. So you can see a few items here, digital collaboration tools, Google tools, so on and so forth. Some of the sessions, digital coaches will plan and they'll have a topic and, and teachers will be able to sign up for those sessions. But you also see at the bottom, what I need, so win time for educators. And really, that's kind of a, an unconference-type setting where teachers would come and they would get support with the things that they need to continue moving forward. So it's a nice balance of offering some, some sessions for teachers to learn more, but then also just getting some support in areas that they're interested in or where they're recognizing they have some opportunities for growth. So we'll run five sessions throughout the course of the summer around just this general technology support. The second piece that we're working on from a digital coach perspective is empower training and standards-based learning training and support. So really, past, empower training has really been focused on the tool, empower itself, which is a really important component, but it's just a tool. So we're really focused on supporting teachers to effectively use empower to support standards-based learning. So you can see some of the, some of the topics there. I think the, the one that's really highlights for us is best practices in standards-based learning. So really, the alignment of our curriculum, instruction, assessment, feedback, and reporting, and really using into, really using empower as a tool to track learning and to provide feedback around learning. So as we're working with teachers this summer and their, their use and migration of empower is really focusing on that standards-based learning component of it, supporting them with how to use a system effective, effectively as a gradebook, and then also supporting them with their assessment practices and feedback practices. Also, another area that we're really focusing on is communication. So how are we effectively communicating with students? How are we effectively communicating with families around this work? So all of these key components are, are going to be built into the support over the course of the summer with our digital coaches. We have a session in June, and that's kind of the initial, what we're calling small batch sessions, where we're small groups of teachers working through philosophy and some of those pieces around standards-based learning. And then in August will be more of the full-day work with teachers and supporting them. And again, as we, as we think about personalized learning, this is really focusing our, our teachers and, and helping our students with purposeful instruction, assessment, feedback, and purposeful learning. So with that, I'll pass it to Brenda.
Good evening. This is our third year partnering with our special education department to make sure that all of our summer professional learning opportunities are connected. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about special ed, which might seem odd, but Laura has blessed me with that. So the first piece up here is CPI. So special ed will be offering CPI, that initial and recert that we continue to offer throughout the summer. And then the second one that's up here, summer improvement grant. So special ed will be funding up to $10,000 for their staff to come together and work on program improvement. What they're seeing right now is they're having a lot of applicants and a lot of innovative ideas. So a lot of thought kind of around the whole concept of personalized learning, what does that mean through the lens of special education? The key note here is to know that both in Summer Academy and in the PL Summit, special ed teachers are teaching sessions and attending sessions. So just because this is a call-out to CPI and some of their curriculum writing time, they are also a full, active member of both our PL Summit and our Summer Academy. Of course, I'm going to talk to you about the Personalized Learning Summit. If you haven't registered, that's okay, you still have time. We currently have just over 200 people that have registered, which to date is about, is pretty good. Like, we're on, we're on par for what we think should be around, hopefully, 700. We've been told that's our maximum capacity. We can't oversell the auditorium. So our hope is that we get there. Might be a little crazy if we do, but that, of course, will be all right. So some of the key things to know about the summit this year here are two keynotes. So we have Ravi, who, I can never say his name, last name right, so just guess how you say that. Hufing, something like that. The first day, and then the sec, and he really talks about human connectedness and what does that mean for you as a, as an educator in our society? And then the second day keynote, we have a gentleman called Virgil Hammons, and he was a superintendent both out at Lindsay, California, and in Maine at RSU2, two districts that we've actually had people do site visits to. They're both empower-using districts, all standards-based, and are embarking on the same journeys as we are. Some important things to note, the first one is, there will be something on the first day called Spark Sessions. Each one of our sponsoring districts is having somebody come forward to do a Spark Session. You can give kudos to Mr. Christopher over here, who has offered to do ours for our district. And basically, a Spark Session is a very short, how many minutes did I tell you? 15? 20, 30? No. It's a very short session that's timed, two slides. And so they go through and they just talk about innovative things to motivate the team, and then it moves on to the next person and the next person. So we'll have four of those in that Spark Session time. We'll have a lunch keynote that day as well, and it's a special guest to be determined, but it may end up being Dr. Bauch. He joked at the end of last year at the summit, every year I would tease him and I would say, hey, I'm so excited you agreed to be our keynote. And every year he would roll his eyes. Well, he agreed maybe to do a lunch session, so he may be our keynote that day. I think that's all on the summit, unless you, we'll have, answer questions on that in a little bit. And then the last thing that's up here is tours. So typically, Delphine would come at this time and she would be really sweet and share lots of great things about tours. The good news and the bad news about tours is that we are so overwhelmed with tours right now, we don't even know the number that we have or the count yet. So we cut off tours at the middle of April and said, all right, we can't book anymore like with the testing season and all of these other pieces coming, we just can't, we don't have capacity. And we have left through May, I think I counted nine of them on my calendar yet. So we still have nine days of tours that are coming through. And I know our Friday is one of our bigger ones, which is 40 people. So we have a lot of people still coming through the district. My guess is probably by the end of the year, we're going to have over 1,000 individuals that have been through our schools. That's amazing. And I was at a, we were at a workshop conference today and somebody was talking to me, they're like, oh, gosh, Eastern Carver County, you guys are a national leader in this work. And I was like, yeah, we are. So that was really great to hear that people are now recognizing us, not only on a regional level, but on a national level. And it's, you know, sometimes when we talk about tours and we talk about, it is, it's a lot for somebody to set them up, it's a lot for them to go through our district. But you know, what we're finding is that the backside of those tours is that our educators are being reassured in the work that they're doing. They're able to clearly articulate what it is that they're expecting of their learners and in return, administrators are expecting of them. We, we also are finding that it's also a really good opportunity for us to take a half-a-step backwards. And when they ask questions that you haven't thought about yet, to really have some good, engaging conversation once they leave about, huh, we never thought about that, or we haven't looked at it from that direction. So what does that mean for us as a district or as a building or even in a classroom? Other things about that, we have those ongoing connections with the Bush Foundation, Education Evolving, the Institute for PL. This year, Brian and I wrote a grant for the personalized learning summit and we received $25,000. So we'll be able to fund the keynotes through the Bush Foundation and that grant that we've received. So really, building some strong partnerships with some of the external organizations around this work as well. Questions?
Board members?
I have a couple. And I think I probably ask you every time we'd hear about how many tours we give them. But we make sure that they're spread around so that like some school isn't just completely overwhelmed with, we don't do schoolwork because we're just giving tours, right? I mean, we spread it around.
Yes. Yes. They've been in all of our schools across the district. In fact, even in STAR, which, and the IAA. So they're in all of our schools all the time. And a lot of times they're requesting specific things. So, you know, we heard about X, Y, and Z program that you have. Can we come and take a look at it?
Okay. And then I still hear a lot of frustration from parents and students about that we have infinite campus and we have empower. And I'm wondering if there's any kind of like far out deadline where we think there might be, we might be back to one system. And I'm, that may be premature, but I know it's a point of frustration for a lot of people that there's two different grading systems in the one district.
Yeah, I could speak to that. I would say we don't have a, like you were saying, we don't have a definite like deadline. We're going to be there at X date. I will tell you that elementary and middle level, the, the percentage of teachers that are in the system, empower are, it's, they're getting, getting really close to 100%. Right now, I think we're in the 40%. And I, I just looked at the, the number of middle school teachers. So we have five, 45 middle school teachers that will be migrating next year and 70 elementary teachers. So we continue to increase at a pretty rapid rate at the elementary and middle level. And we're continuing to work hard at the high school level of developing plans as they're continuing to migrate to, as, as you know, they have some different complexities that we continue to, to make plans for and work with. And we just need to make sure that we're doing the work in the right way as they're continuing to migrate. So I don't have a definite answer, but we are certainly working towards that goal. Our elementary and middle schools will realize that sooner than our high school will.
And I wonder if that won't be a bigger source of frustration to them to come from basically, we came from empower and now we have, especially if they're, if they started out just with that and all of a sudden they now have to figure out infinite campus. Because I mean, I know for my high schoolers, with the 14 classes between the two of them, I think there's one in empower and the rest of it is all just infinite campus. And it's just, gets very confusing and you forget to look at empower.
Absolutely. And I think, I think to your point, as we continue to, to migrate at the elementary and middle level, we need to continue having those conversations of what does that rollout look like at the high school? So we can minimize that as much as we possibly can. I mean, I think about my own daughter as a third grader, having this experience. She's fallen in power. And the language that she uses about, is about her learning targets. It's, it's not about grades. That's what she knows. She was excited because she passed, or she met three learning targets last Friday. So, so as our kids are coming through the system, that's the language that they're going to be using and that's the experience that they're going to have. So we need to continue to, to work hard to, to get that solution at the high school as well, as we are doing.
Thank you.
Well, at, at some point, the students, the teachers won't have the excuse that the students don't get it anymore, or the parents don't get it. Because as more and more of our, I mean, next year Pioneer Ridge will be all in empower. So that's an entire school in there. So at some point, that excuse is taken away from our, our, our high school. And so it's, it's time.
The, the reality is, and I get that question too. I mean, I'm sure a lot of us have. What I tell, you know, the way I explain to people is, these are complex systems. There's a lot of training behind them. We just don't have the resources to give everyone the level of training. That's, you know, that's the main reason. The other reason, as you indicated, is that with, you know, standards-based learning and the system, we're, we're still kind of learning a little bit. So it's kind of, you know, it's a, it's a big task to get everyone trained and kind of what we'd be training them is kind of a moving target a little bit.
And I think part of it too, there's a lot of, as you know, there's a lot of work on the, on the front side of it. At the elementary level, you can bring in whole fifth gr, or an entire language arts committee to do the work in a pretty quick period of time. Well, at a high school, you have so many different English courses and you have only so many teachers to get that work done. So it's just a longer process because you have so many different courses and you actually have fewer staff that are able to do the work. So that's part of the, the plan of what core, what core subject areas do we have completed? And then what are our, what are our plans moving forward to continue, continue getting that work done?
But I'm definitely hearing from parents who've, whose kids have come through, like the adventures program and are now in the high school, and those kids are frustrated. You know, and, and again.
To speak to elementary, I mean, you may have a daughter in third grade that's doing empower, but in fourth grade, they might be with a teacher that's not doing empower. And so then there's that frustration of, we're going backwards because we can't move forward. And then how do we?
Yep.
Yeah.
So let me put it different way. What would it take to have greater adoption? What kind of resource commitment from the district would it take?
I think it's just really, I would say, it's still time. It's so teacher-dependent, you know, and that was the reason we didn't move everybody in at once. Because when you, even when you talk to teachers their first year through empower, it's a significant shift. And usually, kind of like with students in, in our middle schools through adventures and discover and so on, they hit that point of frustration, you know, about halfway through the year and they just about ready to fold up their, their tents and, and go home. And then they kind of work through that, right? So there's, there's a, it takes a lot of work and support to kind of get them through that. And so again, we've tried to do this kind of steady, and actually, we've probably done more slowing people down because teachers want to be successful, right? And so when they start seeing every, well, I got to go to empower because everybody's going to empower, they still might not be quite ready for that yet. And so how do we support them with professional development through our summer work, through our cohorts, so that they're in a place where they can be ready and be successful? And that comes through conversations with instructional coaches, digital learning coaches, with principals, with, with all of those to make sure that they're ready. That's the real, you know, struggle. And I think, again, we'll get there much quicker at the elementary and middle school level than we will at the high school.
All right. We started piling empower in three years ago.
It would have been.
Four, right?
Would have been three years ago.
So we're finishing our third year of empower. And we're going to be at what level of?
That first year though, we had like 12.
I understand. Yeah, I understand. I understand it was very small. Yep. And it's gotten a little bigger and a little bigger and a little bigger.
So I just did the math leading, coming up to the meeting. We're adding, right now I have on the list 135 new teachers next year. And I believe we were at a total of, I want to say in like the upper 30%. So I think that'll, this.
More of 30% of the 700 and what?
Yeah, yeah. So I think, I wish I would have, I wish I would have got that number. I, I think we'll be right around, if I do the math quickly in my head, what, 30%? So we'll be, you know, around.
Well, you're adding 20%, so you're basically.
Yeah, about 50%, yeah, somewhere in that area. I will say strategically, this year as well, from a elementary and middle level, we've worked really hard on making sure that we've refreshed all of our power standards and learning targets. Brian had mentioned that earlier and that will continue over the summer. Feedback and, and just kind of the process, and I've lived this from a teacher perspective as well, articulate power standards and learning targets, but you really don't know if they're what you're looking for until you start using them with students, right? So the language that you use and the items that you're looking to assess. So we've worked really hard at refreshing all of our power standards and learning targets at an elementary level as well as a middle level. So all of our courses K through eight are ready and we feel really good about that. So now it's continuing to provide the professional development for teachers as, as they continue their process in migrating. Been working hard too, the digital coach group, as well as instructional coaches and PL coaches have been working hard in what we're calling kind of a phase system, so to speak. But really articulating to, to staff and then teachers and administrators, you know, what would be the progression in, in migrating? So it's creating a concrete plan and partnering with them to support and expedite some of that professional development. And that's really based on what we have learned, feedback that we've received from teachers, from administrators, from students and parents. And then how can we offer the correct supports and put the right support systems in place to keep it moving forward?
Makes, all makes sense. How were those 100 and whatever, 60 new empower users? How were they determined?
They're determined based on work that they're doing throughout the course of the year.
My point is, have they, they've been selected, they self-selected? I mean, are they, how was that? I mean, how were they moving into that process?
Yeah, sure. I guess it might, it might be a little bit of both, I would say. So our digital coaches, instructional coaches, PL coaches, administrators, working with teachers. So some teachers are like, I'm in, I'm ready to roll. Some teachers are a little bit more hesitant. So then that's more of a coaching environment where those coaches are working with the teachers saying, I'm observing your practices and your practices are aligning with the work that we're doing. I'll support you. Let's work together through this process. So, so I think there's a little bit of both. We're not forcing, like pushing people off the ledge, so to speak. But more, it's more of a partnership with some of those.
And we're really focusing on readiness. You know, are they teaching through standards? Are they assessing through standards? Is there clarity not only for the teacher, but for the learners? So that we're setting people.
Sure. Absolutely. Yep.
You know, the other, sorry, the other message too, is that it's not going away. So teachers aren't, they know we're not waiting this out, right?
Well, some might be.
They are being told.
I mean, they got retirement in two years. I don't want to learn this.
But the conversation has, has been, you know, that we're moving forward with this. And so, and people know that that's happening. We've tried to be really clear about that over the past, even this year, you know. As I met with the association, I think the next day, some teachers went back and said, we might be getting rid of empower. And I never said that, right? So it's being consistent in our messaging too, with our, our leadership and with our teachers and the association that this is critical work with personalized learning. We have to be standards-based if we're going to do this. And really, empower is the tool that allows us really to provide support to teachers to get that done.
And I was going to say, just from a historical perspective, that, piggybacking on what you just said. Teachers for years and years and years have had new policies and new directives that came about every two years. And we, countless numbers of staff threw themselves in it completely and dedicated totally to it, only to literally be reduced to tears when they found out that we were going to go a different direction. And that's a lot of, of, a little bit of what's driving this too, from the staff's point of view, is that questioning, are we going to continue? To, to the public that, that to me says, well, what, what are we doing this? And why are we doing this? And why doesn't everybody have it at the same time? Their little historical perspective does help. If, if we're going to do this correctly, it takes time. And, and I realize that as, as a parent of a kindergartner, I can, or a grandparent of a kindergartner, I can look at it from a different perspective than somebody who's a sophomore in high school. They're getting, they're getting a much different picture of where we are in the, in the process. But, but I think from a, I think from a staff point of view, this, this is excellent in that it isn't going away. And I, I hope that they're getting their perspective. I'll have to talk to our illustrious president and make sure that he's doing his job. But, but I, I, I just think the historical perspective is very important in terms of, of understanding, they're not, teachers aren't necessarily dragging their feet. They're, they're, they're hesitant about, there's still a certain element hesitant about it going away. It's not that they even want it to, but they've just been, they've known colleagues who have been burned before.
Yep.
And, and there's a little bit of that, I think, built into this too.
Well, and we have to remember the readiness piece that Amy talked to because, you know, we had experience, I've had personal experience of teachers moving forward that wasn't ready. And we're still feeling the repercussions of that. And so, yeah, and so we, you know, it's balancing it. As much as it'd be, it'd be, it'd be nice to have it all in, but yes, they knew, they do need to be ready. But we need to still apply, what do you say Clint? Relentless?
Gentle pressure relentlessly applied.
Yes.
These are all, all related. They're not conflicting views, right? The reality is, I, I think they're, you know, again, we're talking about summer learning, right? But, so we're, while we get here, the reality is preparedness, right? So we've got this personalized learning thing there. And that's been up there for a few years. And before that was up on the wall, it was being talked about. So it's not a new concept, so hopefully people know there's impermanence there. This is, we're going to enter our fourth year of empower. So hope people sense that there's some permanence there. So I guess what I'm trying to convey is, that's great. I understand that it takes time and there's historical context. But I'm challenging you to say, well, we could get 100%. We think we got it, you know, let's just say in a perfect world, we think we have this empower pretty much figured out. It's always going to be evolving. It's never going to be a finished product, right? It's always going to be evolving as our learning of this environment is going to be evolving. So, but that said, at some point, you know, we have a, you know, critical mass in our understanding such that we can convey to other people what it requires to be successful in that environment, right? Then it becomes a resource issue. How do we get everyone ready, right? Summer school, whatever the funding is, right? And, and, you know, at some point, I guess ultimately, we need your direction as to when those, when those points are, what the resources are. So that hopefully, you know, we're not four years from now saying, well, we got, we got that 14% of those stragglers that just, you know, by then I would hope it's just the stragglers, right? It's not people that are, you know, it's not benign neglect. It's just pure, good old fashioned passive aggressive, you know, neglect, right? So that's all. We're just, we're providing a little tension to your, to your process. And again, don't take me wrong way, we love what you're doing. And we, and because we love what you're doing, we're just sort of like, how, I'm just throwing it out there. How can we do it faster, right? And it's, it's, you know, it's more of a, you know, rhetorical kind of question in many respects. But I would like us to think, you know, is two years 100%? Is that aggressive? Maybe it is. Is it three years? Is it four years? But I think we need to, we're, we're far enough down. I think Clint, to your messaging, it would be, I think it might be helpful to say, by 2020, I don't know, we're going to have 100% empower. This is our platform. So people can start to go, okay, I'm going to retire 2019? Or, you know, I'm going to start having to learn this new fangled dangle thing.
Yeah. I mean, I think you raise a good point. I mean, do we need to kind of set that? I mean, it'd be curious, and, and I know that first year we had a, a, a small handful. And, and Chris, I know that, you know, the numbers. But it would be, it'd be interesting to see what the adaption has been every year in the past. And, and so that we can make a reasonable.
Because it's been, the growth has been growing, right?
Oh, it has. I mean, if we're doing.
Less than 20 the first year. I think you had like 50, 60 the second year. And then the third year you had, you know, a hu, you know.
So we're at 30% now and we're getting another 20%. I mean, that's phenomenal growth. I mean, that's phenomenal. So can we do 25% the next two years? And can we have, you know, be at 100% empower by 2021? I don't know.
I think we need to talk to the different constituencies and see.
Oh, absolutely. I think we need to make an informed decision and get some feedback. And, you know, and it's always that last 10% that's the killer. But yeah, I mean, what do we need to do as messaging to make sure that?
I think it's easier to, you know, probably create that deadline for elementary and middle school, right? But because of the complexity of the coursework at the high school, you know, I guess my goal would be that we hit that 100% at elementary and middle school. And then ensure over the next few years, we're growing that through the high school to get there over time so that the kids who've kind of lived through it, through three years of middle school are kind of living through that as we go through the high school. So keep in mind with that, when we talk about 30% of, or 30 or 40% of our, our teachers in empower, it's like 15% at the high school.
Right.
Right.
And also, just to, just to give you some context too, as I talked about elementary and middle level of all of the, the standards-based work that has happened, articulating power standards and learning targets. I've been, as we've been working with those groups, we're not bringing those groups in every year to refresh. So from a, from a strategy perspective, we've really keyed in on K8 this year with, with the intention of, like, we're not coming back to the table next year. We're going to use these power standards and learning targets for a few years. So what that will allow us to do is to provide us with a lot more opportunity and more time to work with our high. to work with our high school courses. Brenda and I have worked together to bring in all of those core courses, departments throughout the course of the year to develop outlines and plans as to where they are in the process. And we've started a lot of that work and refresh work this year. And that will continue to support us in developing plans next year. So, you know, it, it doesn't answer your question, but it gives you a little bit of background as to what we're thinking about as we're developing power standards and learning targets. And now I believe we have the opportunity to expedite some of that work, that, that core work at the high school level, which ultimately will help expedite the process and, and support teachers.
So I think maybe a little bit of what you're hearing, it's maybe not hesitancy. As much as it is, there's a little bit more to the story.
Yeah.
I think what we have really started to focus on is this, you know, Empower is a tool, as Clint mentioned, but this is really about the learning. And so what we need is, we need our staff to really have developed a strong growth mindset, a belief in teaching through power standards and learning targets, knowing how to assess that, knowing how to make sure that they're personalizing it for every learner. So there's more to the process than just, hey, we're going to roll out Empower. And so I think that's part of what we're talking about is, we, we've done that, like, we've put Empower in people's hands without some of that background, and we've learned that we need to take a half a step back to make sure that they're in the right place before we move forward. So that's how I think you're, you know, like, I think we'd all be like, yes, 2020, let's do it. But there are a bunch of things that have to happen to get people to a place where they can start to use Empower in a meaningful way. And I think that's part of maybe what you're feeling here is just, yes, we agree, but, and the but is that education and background needs to be there first.
And we've been doing a lot of work throughout this year, particularly with the high school. Both Dick and Jim have been talking with their staff and will be before the end of the year. Chris has talked a lot about the phases, where are you in the process? And to your point of, can you just hold out? We're actually asking every teacher, you need to be in one of the steps and we're going to support you to take the step to the next step. So that we are making progress and it's notable, but it is very complex. You know, as we work through core classes, that's a little easier to do at the high school. As we start to get into electives, especially courses that are single tens offered once a year, or maybe even double tens. There's a lot of courses in our catalog and a lot of great opportunities, but it's a process because they're compiling standards across, you know, national standards. Some courses are informed by state standards, some are informed by AP expectations. So there's a lot to meld and consider as we prioritize and write those learning targets and then align our resources and our assessments so that teachers can be successful. So we're very committed to the process and we'll keep you updated, but it will be a process. And a lot of it is about the journey because that's how we get better at our work.
Old tapes, promise me that, that we won't, to, to make it more, make it quicker to get to 100%, that we won't start looking at getting rid of singletons. So that we won't take the easy way out and say we're going to have required classes and we're going to go back to the 1950s.
We're very committed to our kids having choices and options.
I know we, I know we are.
And following what's on the back wall.
Just wanted it written down someplace.
It's documented now in the conversation.
All right. Well, I apologize, we, we hijacked your, your presentation a bit and I'll take full accountability for that.
Good.
But I, I think it's, it's a symptom of your success, right? I mean, that's really what we're talking about, right? There's, the community is starting to grapple with what these words mean. And they have these systems and we're getting more, having more conversations about this and how great it is and how frustrating it can kind of be. So we're just throwing it out there. Obviously, it's complex, there's a lot, you know, Christopher back there has got a big constituency that, you know, there's a lot on their plate and we need to make sure. And I guess all we're trying to say is, you know, as, as a board, let us know what, you know, if, if you were to say, you know, if we had these kind of resources, we can maybe move it a little faster, but we think this is kind of the path it's going to take because people need to be, you know, they need to be trained and prepared to be a personalized, you know, learning enabler and then obviously the system stuff follows from that. I get that. So to bring that up, I want to go back to the, the, the summer learning. My question is, what's your participation in the summer learning with the teachers? And is that where you need it to be and how would you make it, you know, make it greater?
I know we had numbers at the end of last summer for the number of people that participated. Summer Academy is always full, so like there becomes a point where we can't take any more registrants for it. The PL Summit, I know we had about 30% of our staff that participated in it last year through those other, I mean, like curriculum writing time and some of those other pieces. I would probably bet, and this is maybe taking a risk on this one, but that every staff member in the district does something, whether it's Summer Academy, curriculum writing time, maybe working with a team, power standards and learning targets, something throughout the summer, and most of them multiple things.
Yeah, to their, to the degree possible. I mean, some of them, they need the time away, whether they're, they become the primary childcare giver, whatever. So I mean, so if people can't be here, I think they have rationale for that as well. But I would agree with Brenda that 85 to 95% of the people are here doing something to participate because they're great opportunities. And again, we really try to give people what they're asking for and there's so much teacher input. The whole Summer Academy schedule is really built by teachers for teachers. So it's, it's really instructional coaches and then the Q, the Q Comp Oversight Committee approves all of that and really anything that, that is in line with what we're doing is approved. So we're looking to meet people where they are and to provide them what they need, what...
Is it all self-directed? Is there any, is there any, you know, through the review mechanism, say, hey, you know, this would be really helpful for you, right? Does somebody, does the building leader say, you know, you should, I would encourage you to try to get to this session or that session?
Well, some of the work that we've been doing at the elementary this year around math expressions, the, the adoption of the new math curriculum, we brought the trainer in to do courses during summer, Summer Academy, and they're already full. I mean, it's only been open a week and those are already full. So teachers are saying, this is great stuff, it's what I need and I'm going to be there for it. So, yeah, there are things, and even in Laura's case, where maybe it's CPI training. I mean, this, it may not be the glitzy, you know, choice stuff.
You're glitzy Laura, in my book. You're glitzy.
That wasn't on, it wasn't system jam.
I know at the secondary level, Reader's Apprenticeship Training, that's a thing we offer as well, that's full, that has been full, probably from the first day it opened. As well as the, the PL cohort, so the personalized learning cohort, that is, a portion of that is directed. So as Brian mentioned, that's required throughout the district, so every, every teacher goes through that as a learning process for them. And if they haven't been through it, you get tapped to go, hey, by the way, you have this opportunity in front of you and you can either do it now in the summer or you can do it during the school year. Most people will choose it in the summer if that's an option for them. As well as, I know, Chris, a lot of your professional development is targeted as well, so the Empower small batch training and some of that's targeted as well. So there's a mixture of both. Some targeted and then, you know, options through Summer Academy and, and those things. So a little bit of both.
If it's full, do you ever add more to accommodate demand?
Well, Q Comp, I mean, Summer Academy can only fund so much. So, I mean, we're restricted by dollars at some point.
Can we fund that? I mean, can we add like, find a few dollars if people need training? I mean, that's where I'm kind of coming...
You know, the challenge is with limited time, you know, we try to maximize June. So even adding in, you know, the $40,000 for, you know, curriculum writing time, it just, at some point, there's just not enough time in the summer to do all of that.
We actually, when we started Summer Academy, we had it run over two weeks and based on feedback from teachers saying, you know what, this is great stuff, but I can't do it both weeks, it's just, it's too much. So we actually condensed it into four days and made sure we put a lot more offerings in those four days and people appreciated that more so. So there will always be a need, but a lot, many of the things are things that we continue to replicate throughout the years, similar to the personalized learning cohort. I mean, we're doing a summer session of it, but it's things that we do during the years as well. The same thing with the math expressions training. Because I can't depend on people being, having the time available to elect to come do it in the summer. So we do it during the course of the year as well. Sometimes people just want it again and that's why they come in summer.
And you know, prior to me moving into this position, I remember coming in and having people say, oh, we wish we had this in the summer, we wish we had this in the summer. And now we hear, I can't do anymore, right? Like, I'm doing this, I'm doing this, I'm doing, like, they're, I think, I think we were offering the perfect amount, but we do do a, a survey at the end of summer to get feedback and gather some of that to find out, do you really think that's true? So we'll share that information back with you.
Fair enough. I think the basic slide about Summer Academy 2018 that they demonstrate, doesn't really give you the full breadth of the offerings down in the, in the instructional coaches' room, down in the garden terrace. They have everything written out on the whiteboard and just looking at that, it's really impressive. The amount and, and variety of sessions, I, I don't know anywhere where you could go and get that kind of experience. So I don't, I don't think we're missing people.
Okay. When we have meetings in that room recently and people from outside the district have been in the room, they're like, oh my God, you guys offer all of this in a week? Can we come? I mean, they're impressed. We're doing good stuff. Teachers are doing great stuff.
We don't doubt it at all.
Never a question.
You four are, you're, you're amazing in what you have to do to keep this whole revolution going. So please don't take our questions, or my questions, since I'm the one hogging all the time, is anything but an endorsement and, you know, validation of, of your success. And we're here to help and understand and keep it going.
Thank you. We always appreciate your support.